I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Planning Commission meeting of November 24th, 2008. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Lund?
Here.
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
Now it's time for public comments, and I don't have any cards. Is there anyone that wanted to speak under public comments and not on the agenda item? Okay. This is for, uh, to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay. Written comments, continuous announcements.
Chair members-
Mr. Shepherd.
I'm sorry. Chair members of the Planning Commission, on your desk you have a supplemental packet that addresses a couple of adjustments to conditions on case 6A. Actually, all this pertains to case 6A, a couple of adjusted conditions, and also attached are some comment letters on the project, and also on the desk are two additional comment letters that came in after the supplemental packet was printed and sent out. And that's it.
Thank you. Will the clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case SPA 2007-70740, Z 2007-70741, TTMJ 2008-70238, DP 2006-70589, SUP 2006-70591, and OTP 2007-70139. Applicant: Seventh-day Adventist Church, Costco Wholesale. Request: The proposed project involves legislative actions and related entitlement applicants, including: 1. Amendment #2 to specific Plan #13 in order to realign Grande Vista and Wendy Drive, which is to be renamed Academy Drive north of Camino dos Rios, and reconfigure the intersection of Camino dos Rios and Academy Drive, and make corresponding changes to planning unit boundaries, including redesigning Planning Unit H to Planning Unit D-3. 2. Make corresponding changes to the street alignments and lot lines, investing tentative tract 4927. 3. Approve a change of zone for Planning Unit D3, formerly Planning Unit H from C2, Highway and Arterial Commercial, to C3, Community Shopping Center, in order to conform with specific Plan 13, Amendment #2. 4. Allow the removal of 18 non-native oak trees located on-site. And 5. Allow the construction of a 1,055,743 square foot Costco retail outlet with accompanying parking, gas station, and signage. And 6. Approve site-size parking and grading plan for retail store, major 1. Locations: Northwest corner Grande Vista and Camino dos Rios at Wendy Drive. Recommendation: Recommend to the City Council approval of applications with conditions.
Thank you. And before we begin the staff report, I wanted to ask all the commissioners at this time to disclose if you talked with the applicant or any residents regarding this application. Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thank you. In visiting the site today with Ms. Pedrosa, we bumped into Mr. Fonti, John Fonti, spoke with him briefly, and I did get a call at my house. I didn't happen to be there. My wife took the call, though. I think it was from Mary Ann Klein. And the message was unclear, but she called the house about this particular project.
Okay. Is there anything else, any other commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Pedrosa. Would you like to give the staff report?
Yes, I will. Good evening, Chair members of the Commission. The project in front of you is a specific plan amendment, zone change, tentative tract map, major modification, development permits, special use permit, and oak tree permit for the development of a Costco store, and that changes to the circulation in the area. Specific Plan Amendment 2 to specific Plan 13, what I did is that, uh, an outline of the request on this amendment 2, one has to do the realign Grande Vista and Wendy Drive, redesign intersection of Camino dos Rios and Academy Drive, make confirming changes to the planning unit boundaries, and merchant reconfigure planning units HD1 and D2 into planning units D1, D2, and D3. Basically, by leaving Grande Vista, where it's located right now, where it's existing, we had a separate planning unit H below, south of Grande Vista, and that has been moved up, so it was incorporated in part of, became part of Planning Unit D, and that's the one, reconfiguration of the last item that we're talking about, of the boundaries. With that also, we have a change in zone of Planning Unit D3, which is the old H that was moved up to be part of Planning Unit D, and the zone change is to be changed from C2, which was the current the one, to C3, in that way it'd be compatible with the zoning of Planning Unit D. And the major mod to the best tentative tract map, 4927, is to reconfigure the boundaries of parcel 16, 17, and 18, so they can conform to the boundaries of planning units D1, D2, and D3. On their development permit, the applicant is requesting the construction of 154,000 square foot Costco warehouse with associated parking, and also the approval of the pad, parking, and building size for a future retail building which is identified as major 1. The special use permits request is to allow the construction of the service station which will be accessory to the Costco warehouse, and is for Costco members, and to also allow two canopy signs. The oak tree permit is for the removal of 18 non-native oak trees, which were previously identified, 13 of them were identified on the EIR 276, and the two of those trees have been removed, one with and one without permits. And in the July 2008 oak tree report, seven additional oak trees were identified. They had maturing size, and they were now protected under City Oak Trees ordinance. And also, basically, a total of 18 oak trees would be removed as a result of grading the path for planning D1, D2, and D3. Now, just a clarification, Unit D1, Planning Unit D1 is where the Costco stores will be, Planning Unit D2 is where the fire station is proposed to be, and D3 is for the future major 1 store. And also, as part of the oak tree permit, oak trees 452, 53, and 587 are proposed to be relocated within the site. This is the project site. Oops, sorry. I went too far. And we have Grande Vista, and this actually should be Academy Drive. This is a view of the site from Grande Vista. This one is across the street at the intersection of Camino dos Rios and Academy Drive looking northwest onto the property. This one is the proposed service drive, which was, it's across the street that is proposed to be right turn in and out. And this is a view of the bus stop that is proposed to be redesigned in order to accommodate Costco's driver location. And this one is existing detention basin that is, has been built along Grande Vista that was to be a temporary detention basin, but now is proposed to be a permanent. So background, specific Plan 13 was approved in 1996, and established a long-range development for the 458 acres of land on the north side of the 101 freeway at Wendy Drive. Specific Plan 13 established the land use, development, and design standards, as well as circulation plan for the area. There were three phases of development, and part of the Phase 1 has been completed, which includes come depot, target, and other commercial uses. Amendment 1 of specific Plan 13 was approved in 2006, and that plan deleted the planned northbound 101 freeway off-ramp loop at Wendy Drive, and also revised some of the traffic mitigation measures in lieu of the loop, and also changed planning use F, D2, and H from the fire station to school side, retail to commerce, retail commercial to fire station, and the service station to retail commercial. Also, it designated a new elementary school site in planning unit in F, and modified development phases from three phases down to two. At the amendment 2, what the applicant is proposing is to make changes to specific plan Exhibit A, which is the map, and Exhibit B, which is the conditions related to the planning units D1, D2, and D3. It's redesigning circulation component in order to change the plan alignments of Grande Vista and Wendy Drive, and also redesigns the intersection of Camino dos Rios and Academy Drive to provide adequate traffic separation. It also makes changes to planning unit boundaries, including merging and reconfiguring Planning Unit H into D1, and then D2, and then breaking them down into D1, D2, and D3. And like I mentioned before, D1 is the Costco site, D2 will be the fire station, and D3 is for the future major 1 building. Planning units D1 and D3 are designated commercial, and in D2, like I said, is for the fire station site. The original specific Plan 13 provided for the existing alignments that were going to be revised once Phase 2 was going to be done. And these changes are being shown in both Exhibit Plan Map and labeled Exhibit A, and also in the conditions Exhibit B. And like mentioned before, the tract map major mod will reconfigure the lot lines of parcel units 16, 17, and 18 to conform and match the boundaries of planning unit D1, D2, and D3. And the zone change will change D3 from, into C3 zoning. The components of the project design includes the Costco store, which is about 155,000 square feet, a service station that is accessory to the Costco store, the path for future major 1 building that is going to be about 20,000 square feet, and also the path for the future fire station. The Costco store design incorporates a contemporary Mediterranean style of architecture. We are asking the applicant, and we have it as a condition, that maybe the, for the entry tower to be enhanced architecturally, and also we are asking for a lading dock gate to help screen the lading dock, and also we are asking for the accent band around the building to be used of a tile-type material. Also, with the construction of the Costco store, we ask, the applicant's asking for additional slope height and increase it to 25 percent. That was approved on the specific Plan 13. The, one of the reasons why staff supports that is because in doing so, the retaining wall that is north of Costco would be reduced greatly in height, down to 18 feet, and also the contour of the grading will be enhanced, so this will provide a superior design than if we were to stay within the limits of this original specific Plan 13, we'll end up with a higher wall and a more abrupt grading. And also, the driveway that is off Grande Vista, as of right now, exceeds the 7 percent maximum grade allowed by the code, and right now the applicant is proposing about 8.4 percent. We believe that that could be designed better as we get more into fine grading plans, so what we're asking right now the Commission is to approve the, or to recommend approval of the driveway exceeding 7 percent, and then we'll get, the staff will review and approve the design at a later date. The Costco store is actually providing additional 16 parking spaces than what is required. It also is providing additional accessible parking spaces on-site, and it complies with the architectural design guidelines and municipal code requirements. The service station is going to be accessory to the Costco store and for members only. They are proposing right now two canopy signs that, which staff is not supporting, in that we, the city regulations would not allow roof signage, and we have not allowed this in other gas stations, so we don't think we support this. However, the actual gas station and the canopy design, they do comply with city requirements, and it is compatible with the main building design. The major 1 building will be, the design of it will be submitted under separate permit modification, and right now while we're approving, or what the Commission will be considering will be the, uh, the building pad, parking, and size of building, and this right now as is blocked out, the building could potentially be within 22 feet minimum of the top slope, and the code requirement on the Resolution 79-270 is to have minimum 25 feet. Staff feels, believes that these 22 feet is acceptable, in that the building is not yet designed. Things could change. Once they submit to the minor mod, we can definitely adjust the location of the building once we have that permit in hand. Also, we are supporting the design of the manufacturer's slope to be 2:1 instead of 3:1, as required on Resolution 79-270, in that the 2:1 slope has been approved in the past within the specific Plan 13 area, and also in other areas in the city, and we actually find this design to be acceptable. In reviewing the oak trees that are on-site, there are additional oak trees that staff has found to be, has identified acceptable for relocation. Those are trees 386, 475, G, and F. And also, we identified five oak trees that have, that are dead and that will be removed, and so therefore six trees will be, will be removed from site. This is a site plan showing how the project is laid out. To the northwest of the project, we have the proposed Costco store, and on the right-hand, right-hand top part of the screen is the fire station. Sorry. With, and then we have, in the middle to the right is the Costco gas station, and then below that would be the proposed major 1 building. This is the proposed elevations for the Costco building. The east elevation is what will be facing Academy Drive. The west elevation is facing the back of the, of the wall, I mean, sorry, is facing opposite, it's not visible from the street. And north, the north elevation is also not seen from the street, however, the south elevation will be facing Grande Vista. And the applicant has worked with staff in developing this architectural design, which is, is enhanced, and is actually a good design. This is a proposed gas station canopy design, and she's showing the two canopy signs are proposed in which staff is not in support of. Then I'm going to pass the presentation over to Beth Baden from Traffic Division to talk about some of the traffic.
Thank you. Thanks. Good evening. I'm Beth Baden with the city's Traffic Engineering Division. I wanted to discuss the traffic impacts of the project. The original EIR for this project was approved in 1996, and since that date, as the developer has constructed various parts of the project, completing basically Phase 1 of the project, the developer has constructed various improvements to date, including three traffic signals that are off-site from the project at Reno and Olcanaho, Reno at Lesser, and Reno at Borchard. The developer also constructed Phase 1 improvements to Wendy at the northbound ramps and Wendy at the southbound ramps. Amendment #2 to specific Plan 13 is what's being discussed tonight, and as part of this current proposal, the developer would be required to add a new turn lane on the Wendy northbound 101 off-ramp, and construct various street widening projects, including adding a right turn lane on Camino dos Rios, realigning and widening Academy Drive, and widening Grande Vista Drive. Project mitigation for the project also includes a major contribution to the city's Wendy Bridge widening project in the amount of 42 percent of the total project cost. City will be constructing improvements to the Wendy interchange, widening the bridge to add a lane, a travel lane in each direction on the Wendy Bridge, and also widening the Wendy 101 northbound on-ramp, and making various improvements to the 101 northbound and southbound intersections. City and Caltrans are currently working on the approval process for the project, and it's anticipated that the construction will be complete by the year 2010, um, sorry, The project that's before you tonight, MND #266 was prepared, and the traffic analysis for MND 266 shows no change in traffic generation because the project itself is not changing. The only difference is that the, the roads are being realigned and widened. Retail development previously considered in Amendment #1, MND 253, considered a similar-sized project to the Costco with a gas station and the major 1 development that's, that you've been considering. With this project, the streets will basically remain in their current location with the street widening that I described a minute ago, which basically moves, means that Grande Vista Drive would remain in the current location and not be moved to a point 475 feet north of Wendy Drive, and also that Academy Drive would be realigned and widened.
In regards to the environmental review, the MND 266 analyzes several potential environmental effects, which include the viewshed impact from the Ventura freeway, the realignment of Grande Vista and Academy Drives, the redesign of the intersection of Camino dos Rios and Academy Drive, removal of 18 non-native oak trees, grading stormwater management, land use and traffic were addressed, and also includes the recommendation mitigation, recommended mitigation measures needed in order to reduce or avoid these impacts. Based on the conditions that are in your packet, and also on the findings that are included, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the project to City Council based on the findings and the conditions contained on the staff report. I should also like to mention that in your supplemental packet you have five letters. Three of them are in favor of the project, one letter subjecting the project, and one letter with, regarding questions on the project. And also, we have two proposed conditions, Condition 142 of the DP is revise security condition from the police department, and also Condition 31 of the SUP on the whole line of imported or exported materials. At the end, we are in additional language for the whole route of, of the film materials taken into consideration in the elementary school. We do have present with us Mr. Smith, if you have any environmental questions. He's our environmental planner, and also we have Wes Taggart from Development Engineering, Shelley Austin from Costco, and we have representatives from the fire department, and also John Ennis, if you have any questions regarding landscaping and oak trees.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes. When will the Costco building be complete?
That's actually a good question. We can probably ask the applicant. In regards to what staff knows about is there are several items that need to be resolved and completed prior to allowing a Costco building permit to be issued, including the street improvements, and that, some of those, some of that, those improvements would have a longer lead item. The, I know the applicant has had preparing the past tentative schedule, and, and they could probably give you a better idea of when they think that's going to be completed.
Okay. Second question, you had mentioned the construction will be complete in 2012. Now, is that the construction of the entire project, including the bridge and roads and everything?
That reference to the year 2010 is completion of the city's Wendy Bridge project, which includes widening the bridge, widening the northbound on-ramp, and various intersection improvements at the northbound and southbound ramps by the city.
Okay. One last question. The roads that are being realigned and widened, this is prior to the project, correct?
Right. The conditions of approval require that the street improvements be completed prior to, actually prior to building permits for the Costco project, and that's because we, we believe that the Costco building is a fairly quick turnaround, and this would ensure that the improvements are in place prior to the building being complete and occupancy permits being issued.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Lund?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. I had one additional question, since Commissioner Fisher cheated off my sheet here. What is the, what are the size of the Costcos that they are now building presently, as opposed to this project?
Um, we do have a comparison. The Costco in Simi Valley is about 136 to 96 square feet. The Westlake Village is 135, 444 square feet. The Oxnard is 142,000 square feet, and what Costco corporate has told me is that their typical, um, size building that they have been building for the last couple of years has been more on the average of 160,000 square feet. This one is a little bit smaller because there's some size constraints, and one they're proposing right now is about 154, 700 square feet, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you very much. Just to be clear on this oak tree report, I walked the site extensively with Mr. Ennis and Ms. Pedrosa, and you may have noticed that she mentioned during her, the staff report that there are four trees that would be suitable for transplant: 386, 475, and then trees G and F. I believe I have the concurrence of Mr. Ennis on this as well as staff, so I would intend to ask the applicant to add that to the conditions, that those four trees be transplanted. I don't know if, there was one small discrepancy in the report as well. Tree number 502 is actually dead, but I don't know if Mr. Ennis would like to add to that, or as far as the four that we'd like to have transplanted. He gives me the thumbs up. Okay. So, we'll get to that when we get to the applicant. Just a couple of questions. I think I heard you write that the applicant has agreed to no canopy, right? No canopy sign?
Uh, my understanding is that they're still pursuing the canopy signage. My understanding is that they're still pursuing the canopy signage. But we have a condition to not, that we don't support it, so.
Oh, okay. I thought I'd heard you say that the applicant agreed to that condition, but they have not, then?
Well, we can ask the applicant.
Okay, very good. You know, that detention basin, that huge detention basin? Are there any safety issues to that thing being right next to the store? I mean, you know, it's a big, deep hole there, so I don't know.
I'm going to ask Mr. Taggart to answer that question.
Okay. I understand that there's been talk about covering, you know, putting a top layer on it for parking, but if it were to stay open, I just wonder if there were any safety issues?
Hi, Wes Taggart, Land Development Public Engineering. I did not understand your question, I'm sorry.
The detention basin, that huge basin there that'll be next to the store, are there any safety issues to that? Because it's, you know, a big hole in the ground.
It's designed to hold...
Safety for people, is what I'm saying.
No. I don't, I don't believe so, no. This is something that's standard with all of our development.
Okay. I mean, would there be a fence around it or something, or?
I believe there already is one proposed.
There is a fence proposed around it?
I believe there is one, yes.
All right, because I mean, it's going to be close to the store, and it's, you know, it's a big, deep pit. So, I wouldn't like to see anybody fall into it, is what I'm getting at. But there is a fence proposed to be around it.
I believe the last plan that I saw shows a fence on there.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, thank you, thank you. Just to be, just to be sure, on Condition 53, you know, the scenic, 101's a scenic highway, and it's, I want to make sure I get this condition right. That's a condition that's calling for landscaping to soften the project from the freeway, correct? Condition 53?
Is that of specific plan or development permit?
It's on page 76. Additional, yeah, I think that's, additional landscaping shall be provided, the manufactured fill slate located in the north side of Grande Vista. That's the freeway shield, is it not?
And it's the bottom of the page 76. I mean, the number is at the bottom of the page and not the top.
It's kind of right in the middle, number 53.
Yes, I did find it. Actually, this particular landscaping on Grande Vista is to, it is to help the grade that is along the street on Academy and Grande Vista. That one is to soften that manufacturer slope that is right at the street.
Okay. Is that, but is that the one that softened from, for the 101 as well, isn't it?
Actually, that slope isn't really particularly visible from the freeway because of the elevation of, elevated elevation of Wendy Drive. It's more visible from Camino dos Rios. There are portions of Wendy Drive where you might be able to see that slope, but I think the intent here is to, because of the slope angle, is to provide added landscaping on that slope, just to soften the slope angle. It really isn't directly visible from the freeway.
Okay, all right. And then, I got to ask you some, a couple of traffic questions here, oh boy. If you don't mind, this would be for Ms. Baden. So we're heading north on Academy, and the fire station's on our left. And, you know, we're going to be making a left onto Broadbeck there to get into Costco, right? But as I understand it, there's going to be a, the fire station, of course, has to have access to get the vehicles out, so there's going to be a, what do you call it, a keep-clear area, right? Is that going to, what's that going to do for the people turning left? I mean, are they going to queue up there and too far back from the, from the left turn? A chute?
There are turn lanes that are provided to, for the northbound traffic to go from Academy Drive into the site. If the queues extend beyond the turn pocket that's provided, they would have to obey the keep-clear area. It's not anticipated that that queue would extend into that area very often, but in the rare cases that it does, they would have to obey the vehicle code.
Yeah, I mean, it's important to keep that clear, isn't it? Considering, because the vehicles could go out, they have to go out, they could either go left or right, okay? But they, you're just saying it would be a rare occasion that the left turn chute would overflow, then?
That's right.
Okay, all right. As far as the bridge widening goes, which has been an issue, so from what I just heard, you're looking at 2012. Can you just tell me, I mean, the level of service at the intersection is C. How important is that bridge widening to keep that LOS at C? I mean, is that intrinsic to keeping that level of service at C?
Mostly what the bridge widening will do is to add additional stacking for the cars that are waiting to go through the intersections. The level of service is C today. The project, as I mentioned earlier, has already constructed improvements to the Wendy 101 southbound ramp intersection and Wendy at the 101 northbound ramp. They're also going to be adding a northbound off-ramp lane and also contributing about 42% to the cost of the bridge widening by the city.
So would you say, then, the widening at the bridge is definitely intrinsic to keeping that level of service at a C?
I'm not sure that I understand the question that you're asking. What I was trying to explain is that the project impacts have been quantified, and the developer has constructed mitigation, basically completed project mitigation at Wendy and the 101 southbound ramps. They've done Phase One mitigation, which covers project Phase One traffic impacts at the northbound ramps. And they'll be completing a second set of improvements to Wendy at the 101 northbound to mitigate Phase Two impacts. In addition, they're going to contribute towards the city project as well.
Okay, all right. Do you happen to know the level of service at the intersection on the other side of the bridge?
Which side would that be?
Wendy and Old Canaho.
I believe, right now, it's a level of service C.
It's also a C?
Mm-hmm. And that's obviously an average around the intersection. So, you know, we're looking at all four approaches and looking at peak hour.
Mm-hmm. But it wasn't included in this particular analysis, that particular intersection? It just was too far out of the impact point, or?
Because this project, Amendment number two, is not changing the project as far as the development scenario. What it's doing is requesting a change to the street alignment for Grande Vista Drive and for Academy Drive. So it's really not going to be changing the 101 southbound ramp or the project impact to that intersection, because it's not a change to the development project.
All right. So you're going to anticipate this project dropping the level of service below a C at the Wendy and Old Canaho?
Not beyond what was discussed in the original EIR and then in MND 253, which was part of Amendment number one.
All right. Okay, let me just change the subject quickly here. Now we're on Grande Vista, and we're heading eastbound, we're heading eastbound, and you can't make a left?
Correct. The intersection will be configured to prohibit left turns out of Grande Vista to go northbound on Academy.
So then how do, if you're coming down Grande Vista, then how do you get to Costco? Oh, you can pick up that other driveway before, right?
Right, they could go into the back driveway if that's where they were destined. Most of the uses on Grande Vista Drive are industrial in nature, and it's assumed that most of that traffic would be going back to the freeway or, you know, to other points in the city.
Okay. And then that other little driveway on the right-hand side, it doesn't really have a name, it's where the Home Depot Target driveway is, it's kind of in between Broadbeck and Camino dos Rios. You can't make a, so if you're leaving there, you can't make a left, you can only go right?
Correct. The driveway to the shopping center on the east side of Academy, that's already existing, where Islands is.
Right.
There will be a median installed on Academy Drive, and that will limit that driveway to right-in, right-out access. There are other driveways to that site that would allow full access to the project, but this one will be restricted.
As an alternative to get back to the freeway, in other words?
Right. So that they, customers could go in any direction that they want to go.
Okay. Okay, that's it for now, thanks.
Commissioner Grimney?
Yes, my question is going to be going back to looking at the bridge and kind of piggybacking on the questions that Commissioner Fisher and Adams have already made. And first, even before I begin, Ms. Baden, thank you so much for preparing such a great and thorough report, and I think you did an excellent job on it. So that, make sure that I'm understanding what's happening with that bridge. There's going to be the on-ramps and the on and off-ramps, which are going to be completed by Caltrans. The bridge is going to be widened, and that's a City of Thousand Oaks project? Or is it a Caltrans project?
Well, if I could step back just a little bit, the developer's going to be widening the northbound off-ramp to add another turn lane, and that would happen before the Costco project would get building permits. The city project, it's a city project, city's going to do the construction to the Wendy Bridge and also to widen the northbound on-ramp. The city will be constructing the project, but since it is Caltrans right-of-way, we have to obtain permits and permission from Caltrans. We also have to go through the design process with Caltrans.
Are you expecting all of that to be completed by 2012, or portion?
Yes.
Okay, all of it. And is there a possibility that Costco will be built without this project being finished first? Could we end up in a situation where we have Costco there, but we still haven't completed this other project?
That really is the likely scenario, that the Costco project would be constructed and occupied. The northbound on-ramp will be widened and completed by a developer prior to building permits for Costco. But the city bridge project and the northbound on-ramp widening, that is what would be completed by 2012. And it's, that would probably happen after Costco would be occupied.
Okay, and then this next question is probably either for Ms. Pedrosa or Ms. Noonan, I don't know which one. Can we make as part of our approval, would it be in our purview to, to require that that work be completed prior to the building permit, or is that?
The bridge widening project was what was implemented based on cumulative conditions. And cumulative conditions isn't just the Costco project, it's a bunch of projects throughout the vicinity. That's why SDA Costco is only a portion, 42% of the cost associated with the bridge widening. And what that means is that their project will, is, their project is necessitating the bridge widening, but a bunch of other projects likewise are necessitating the bridge widening.
Okay, so it's not that we had gotten the money prior with the original part, and this is the final piece, so that we can do the bridge widening?
It's a cumulative type of a mitigation measure. It's different, and that's why Beth, you know, distinguished between project traffic mitigation, which has to be completed prior to the building permit issuance, and this is something that will be constructed after building permit issuance, because, because this project is not responsible for the full requirement, for the total requirement or necessity of having that bridge widening. There's other projects itself.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Sorry, just one more quick traffic question. Now we're heading, now we're heading southbound on Academy, and we're going to go into those three new lanes that you have there to turn right onto the freeway, three, you've widened it, now you've got three new. Are you concerned about the queuing there? From what I read, it sounded like there's a definite propensity for that to back up there.
The traffic signals are going to be coordinated, so there will be a new traffic signal installed at the intersection of Grande Vista and Academy, and that'll be interconnected with the traffic signal at Camino dos Rios and the Wendy Bridge. So those two signals being coordinated, that will control the flow of traffic southbound.
And you don't see the people trying to turn right backing up into that Grande Vista-Academy?
Well, against, that's against the vehicle code, you're not allowed to stop in the middle of an intersection. So they can't proceed into the intersection until there's room for them to stack, but the signal timing will be set up to minimize that occurrence.
Just a little tight in there, that's all. So they're going to need good signal timing, I think. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Pedrosa, I had a question. Regarding the stripe, or the red stripe around Costco, could you tell me what other suggestions staff has made?
Yes, when the project was first submitted, it included a large red stripe throughout the building. Since then, the applicant, we've worked with them, and they have reduced greatly the size of the stripe and the length of it. And then afterwards, we suggested to, instead of being a painted stripe, to do an accent material such as tile, and made more of an accent band versus a painted stripe, and they have agreed to that. However, I do have a condition in there in that we have not decided, we have not finalized the design of it, what kind of material, what color specifically, and so on and so forth. It is going to be something that complements the building.
But something that is not shiny?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? Okay, then I'll start the speakers' cards, and we, sure, that's what I was going to do. We have two main speakers tonight. One is for the Seventh Day Adventist, and one is for Costco. So each one will get 15 minutes, and then each one will have the right of a five-minute rebuttal at the end. So the first one is Mr. Dale Ortman. If you've come forward, state your name and city of residence, and he is representing the Seventh Day Adventist. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Reynolds, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Dale Ortman with the Holland Group, Thousand Oaks. Tonight represents my silver anniversary on this project, believe it or not. It's been 25 years since we started work. And it's kind of interesting to see the Costco project finally coming on board, because we looked at a price Costco many, many years ago, to be put where the Home Depot is right now. That was the original concept. And if you, any of you remember the models that we used to have to haul around? We used to have to rent a U-Haul truck to bring them back and forth. We had, I think, seven planning commission meetings before the approvals for that project occurred. So tonight is an interesting night for me. I've grown old on this project, and I feel honored to be representing the church, Seventh Day Adventist Church. And I have a distinguished gentleman sitting behind me in the audience, and some representatives from Costco and some from the development company, Rich Development, who is really going to be building this project, and it's Mr. Tab Johnson is in the audience. He's going to be available for questions in case I can't answer some of your questions that may come up. Also from the Seventh Day Adventist Church is Mr. David Phillips, who has been with this project for a number of years now and is really spearheading the project on behalf of the church. And you're going to hear from Mr. Michael Akuma, who is the architect for Costco. And we also have representatives from Lynn Scott Law, Greenspan, Mr. Dave Schender, and Kesar's technical questions that you may still have tonight that I cannot answer on traffic-related issues. But I'll be brief. I don't really have that many comments. I have a couple of housecleaning items that I'd like to address to the commission, and which won't take very long at all. I did want to thank staff for an excellent report. Some of you have already done that. We've worked diligently with them. They've gone out of their way to help us get here tonight, and it's one of the best staff reports I've ever seen written. So because of that reason, I don't have many questions or comments. But I do have a couple of minor items that I wanted to bring to your attention. Condition number 54, which is on page 38, that would be the bottom, the bottom page Condition 54 has been changed from the original... Condition fifty-four has been changed from the original specific plan, and the changes are crossed out and underlined. And I want to bring this to the commission's attention. This is not, these changes are not really welcomed by the developer because they put some hardships on them. We want to be able to further work with staff on these conditions and this, and the language in them, to try to give a little bit more flexibility. And the reason being is that we all want the same thing. We want to have all the improvements done before Costco opens, and I think that's in everybody's interest, including the developer. But sometimes when you tie the hands of the developer and the contractor too severely, it puts hardships on them. And so we want to be able to discuss this, and I'm just only bringing this up tonight because I don't think staff has been amenable to changing it back the way it originally was. They have their reasons, and again, I think we all want the same thing. But I want to bring that up. The second item is on page forty, at the bottom of the page, and it's condition fifty-seven B. And this is pretty much just a housekeeping item. Fifty-seven B is the top paragraph on that page, and the last three lines of that paragraph, we'd like to have some additional wording put in. After the word "Academy," we would like to have the words "serving the bus stop" added. And this is a minor thing, but we do have some curb cuts on Academy now that we need to preserve. They go to the existing development, and we just can't arbitrarily close those off. That land is not owned by the church anymore. That's privately owned. And I think it's just something that was inadvertently left out. I just want to make sure we get that back in. And further down on that page, same page, condition fifty-seven F, has some language in it that is difficult for the developer. And that language has to do with the queuing analysis, and I believe we already did a queuing analysis. We did exhaustive studies for the operation of the signals that are going to be installed on Academy. There are three signals that we're going to be, we're going to be modifying one and adding two more. And I believe that the way that condition is written now, it kind of leaves an open end to something, and it just makes us nervous when we read that. And I may be reading into it something that's not there, but the way it's written right now, and I'd like to be able to work with staff on maybe having something a little bit different that the developer could be satisfied with. There's another minor item on page forty-two, that's the bottom of the page, and it's condition fifty-eight C. And that condition reads "prior to building permits." We'd like to add the word "after," "prior to," we'd like to put "only" the Costco building. The building permits for the Costco building, I think that's the intent that staff had on that. There are other permits that we want to obtain. Those have to do with retaining walls, fencing, and things like that. But we're satisfied with having that language for the Costco building only. And if you look in the staff report on the bottom of page ten, I think they correctly stated in there. So we're not asking for something that wasn't intended in the first place. We've, I reviewed the supplemental conditions that were handed to me tonight, and I don't have any problem with those. I think those are okay. The issue that came up with the oak trees, again, I don't think that that's going to be an issue with the additional transplanting, but I would like my oak tree consultant to have the chance to review that first, and I think we could take care of that between now and the city council meeting. There were some questions that were brought up by the commissioners, and a couple of them I think I could comment on. Some of them I'll defer to Mr. Okuma, the architect. Mr. Fisher, you, by the way, you all asked very good questions, and I'll try to answer some of those or clarify the language on some of those. You asked when the Costco building was going to be complete, and I believe right now the timetable is January of 2010 is when we're proposing to complete that building. And yes, that will be built and in operation before the bridge widening occurs. But I did want to make it clear to everybody that the track, traffic improvements that are going to be made by this development outside of the bridge widening itself will still keep that intersection at level of service C with Costco opened. So I don't know if that was clearly stated, but the developer is making a lot of improvements just beside the bridge widening. He is contributing to that. But that intersection will remain level of service C before the bridge is completed. I think Commissioner Adam, you asked a good question about the detention basin. The detention basin that's built now is a temporary basin. A portion of that basin is built to the permanent design. What we will be doing with the grading of the Costco project is making that basin smaller. And in making that basin smaller and putting the fill-in for Costco, we will be adding some grading and walls to that. There will be a six-foot ride iron fence completely surrounding it that will protect people from going into it. There will be automobile gates that will be built with locks that will be for maintenance of the basin. So there will not really be people that should be in there, in there. I think Mr. Smith correctly answered the questions about the landscaping. We did, we did some exhaustive sections through the freeway and did some sightline studies. And as you know, in the Caltrans area, there is a lot of tree growth in there now that kind of screens this entire project from the freeway. With the widening of the bridge and the widening of the northbound on-ramp, it's conceivable that some of that shrubbery and trees will be removed, but it's my understanding that a lot of that will also be replaced. I think that that pretty much covers the questions that I had marked down. I'd be, if you have additional questions you'd like to ask me, I'll try to answer them. If not, I'll shut up and sit down.
Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Ortman? Commissioner Adam?
Hi, Mr. Ortman. Can you speak for the applicant then in regard to this canopy signage?
I'll let Mr. Okuma, the architect, handle that. That's up his alley.
All right. And as far as the trees, can you speak to that? Because...
Only, only in that, as I mentioned, I'd want my oak tree consultant, he's not here tonight, but I'd want him to review that, that change that was introduced tonight. I was fine with the way it was originally stated, but now that we have some additional trees, I want him to look at it, that's all. I don't think it's going to be an issue, but...
Well, I mean, it would have been my intent, or it is my intent, to add that as a condition and ask for your acceptance of that.
As far as I'm concerned, it's okay, but I want to reserve the right to have my consultant just take a look at those trees that were mentioned. I don't think it will be an issue.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Ortman.
You're welcome.
And you will be called back for rebuttal.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Okuma, and he is main speaker for Costco. You have fifteen minutes, and please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner and Planning Commission. My name is Michael Okuma. I'm the director of real estate development for Costco Wholesale. My address is 500 North State College in Orange, California. I'm here before you tonight to request a favorable decision on our new warehouse. We started about, a little over two years ago on this project, and when we started to where we are, the design has changed quite a bit, and for the better. We've worked diligently with staff and John Prescott. John Shepard originally started the project with us. Claudia's worked with us very nicely, and we've, I think we have a very fine project to present to you with a lot of changes and a lot of amendments to the design. The project itself, we are, the project that we're designing is a, is a, pretty much of a green building. The design of the structure is ninety-five percent recyclable. We have, we meet all the tenants of the LEED in sustainability. The design has come a long way since our beginning, and we think that we have a good project. The conditions themselves, we've reviewed very carefully, and for the most part, we agree with all the conditions except for the three, as mentioned before. One is condition number twenty-four under the DP regarding screening of the loading dock area. We feel that because of the operation of the facility, because of the way the trucks that are coming in, there are other methods and means of screening the loading dock that we think would be more appropriate, either through landscaping, through screen berms, through landscape berms, something that could basically provide a easy way of administrating that condition without depending upon a gate that has to be open and closed. Another condition, number twenty-five, regarding the height of the canopy. Right now, we are, the design that we have for the entrance canopy is about thirty-seven feet tall. We think it's approximately the correct height proportionality-wise. Any taller, we are concerned about the comfort of our members going through that canopy, being dwarfed, being overwhelmed because of the size of the canopy itself, going through such a large monument. We're trying to make it comfortable for the members. We believe that thirty-seven feet is adequate and that the design is proportionate with the elevation design. The last condition that we have concerns about is condition nineteen of the SUP, the canopy sign at the gas station. Because we are a member-only warehouse, we don't depend on signage per se as a normal gas station to bring in customers. That is, that only members could get gas there. The signs that we're proposing are modest, are incorporated into the design of the canopy, and are only facing the parking lot, the warehouse itself. Its intent is for, to be as a wayfinding sign so that members know where the gas station is in the parking lot. That's the only intent. Our members are accustomed to seeing that sign when they come for our gas station, so we're just trying to provide what, with all the warehouses, the same sort of amendments, amenities and designs that they're accustomed to when they come to our warehouse. Other than that, besides, besides our design, besides the fact that we are a membership warehouse, we feel that this location is correct, that the City of Thousand Oaks is the correct location. Because we have members, we know where they basically live and shop, and we feel that this would serve the membership quite nicely. We wouldn't put it in a place where there wouldn't be any members per se. We want to make it as convenient as possible. As you know, for ourselves, we have excellent paying jobs, we have excellent benefits that can provide over two hundred, three hundred jobs for the community, as well as keep the taxes in this area. Other than that, if there's any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer. I am also here with, tonight, with our consultants, Dale Goldsmith of Arben's Arm Brewster Goldsmith, Francis Chu, our architect from Greenberg Farrell, Greg Muno, the site engineer that's doing the engineering for our particular bad building from Fusco Engineering, and Dale Huntington. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. The first canopy you talked about is really the tower element of the building, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am, that's the entrance to the warehouse itself.
And you don't want to raise it, is that it?
It's contrary to what a retailer's doing, only because architecturally speaking, we feel that going through such a large element, it makes you feel uncomfortable proportionality-wise in terms of the overall design of the building. The current proposal at thirty-seven feet at the top fits in with the character and the design of the architecture. Any larger, any taller, you're kind of going through some large monument, and that's not the intent. We want to create an element that still provides a sense of entry, yet since, but also fits into the proportionality of the overall architecture.
And is your Westlake store, is that the one with the lower canopy? Or a tower? I'd rather call it tower, because canopy's going to confuse us with the gas station.
I believe so. I couldn't tell you exactly what the exact height is.
Okay, okay. And also, now I know you tracked me, I was at Simi yesterday, and I noticed for the gas station, there's a little sign that you have in the parking lot directing people to the gas stations. Don't those signs work well?
They'll work well as well, but in, in most, well, in this particular circumstance, the way the layout of the site is, it's very, it works out well in terms of entry and exit into the site. Normally, in all the rest of our, all the other warehouses, we typically have that sign, and because of the height of the sign in relationship to the parking lot, it's easier to see when you're coming out of the warehouse or driving through the parking lot.
But don't you think that most of your customers would know where the gas station is, though, too?
Yeah, but it's easier, in the parking lot size, it's easier just to see that as an element, a monument element to go toward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Adam?
Did I understand you to say that you are going to go for LEED certification on this building?
No, sir. Basically, our buildings themselves, we've been, we've been doing sustainability because it's just good business practice. Most of our buildings that we've been building past fifteen years meet that, though we don't apply for LEED certification. We'd rather spend the money on efficiency of the structure, efficiency, in other words, our buildings, because of their metal, because of the masonry, are ninety-five, a hundred percent recyclable, recycled material. We'd rather put in the cost rather than certification into going for using better refrigerants rather than freon for our deli cases. We feel that rather than the certification itself, by using what the intent of LEED is to better the environment, make it more green, we'd rather put that back into the structure rather than certification. In fact, so much so, in this building in particular, we're looking into the potential photovoltaic cells. We've got a lot of roof area. But by applying for LEED, that takes the money away from actual hard elements that you can show the results. And that's why we're not going for LEED, but if we were, we would be silver, just by the nature of what we're doing.
I see. So you are thinking of solar for the roof?
We're looking at it, we're doing a cost analysis right now, working with Edison and trying to work it into the system. The structure itself is designed to carry the additional load of the solar cells. Now we're just going back through the engineering right now.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Okuma. The next speaker is Tab Johnson, and would you please come forward, state your name and city of residence? And because of the number of cards that we have, each speaker now will have three minutes. Okay. The next speaker then is David Phillips. For questions? And he is from the Seventh Day Adventist.
For questions, and he is from the Seventh Day Adventist. Mr. James Shoemaker? Questions? David Shender? And traffic consultant, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Dale Goldsmith? This is fast. Irene Shepherd? When you come to, state your name and city residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Irene Shepherd, and I live in the Newberry Park section of Thousand Oaks. And I'm here for Costco, that's probably obvious. And I'm here speaking about senior citizens, of which I am one. Costco is such a great store. It would be a great addition to Thousand Oaks because Thousand Oaks has just about everything else. And because it's a drive to Simi Valley, to Westlake, or Oxnard, and seniors are still driving, and we don't like to drive as far as everybody else. And for everybody else's safety, it's, it's good that we don't drive as much as everybody else. So I, I want a Costco that has all of these wonderful bargains, wonderful prices, and great quality in our own community. And I think for now, when prices are just getting sky-high every day, and higher yet to come tomorrow, including gasoline, which happens to be a great price right now, but is not going to stay that way very long, I think that Costco would just be a great asset for every one of us, if you people all live in the area, and I assume that most of you do, and also for families that have children and have a lot of mouths to feed. Costco is just a great store with good prices and good quality, as I stated before. And that's why I'm rooting for Costco. So I hope that you people will be wise enough, kind enough, thoughtful enough to go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Grumney, Mrs. Shepherd?
Mrs. Shepherd, first off, thank you for coming and testifying, and it's very important to have public input, so I appreciate it. Love your hat.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I also want to compliment you because you actually brought to mind a concept I think is really important, which is the concept of seeing that you have things within your community because it does mitigate traffic to have them around. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Shepherd.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Francis Chu. Oh, okay, thank you. I think I got the cards mixed up there, so, okay. And the next speaker is Mo Tahari. Come forward, state your name and city residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My, my name is Mo Tahari. I live in Westlake Village. My business is across the street from this Costco that's going to be built. I guess I'm the only one here opposed to this project. Couple of concern that I have is, city of Thousand Oaks has never allowed a retailer to sell fuel and alcohol beverages under the same roof. Even Seven-Elevens in city of Thousand Oaks do not sell alcohol, especially next to the major freeway and, and a church. Also, by building Costco in Newberry Park, I believe since we have within fifteen, twenty minutes of drive to Westlake and Oxnard, we can, we can buy anything we want from Costco. I mean, this is going to be a hardship for small businesses in Newberry Park and Thousand Oaks. And as, as hard as it is, and it might even put us out of business because they carry everything that a small business does, so I'm totally opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. And your letter was in our packet. I'm sure the Commissioner's read the letter that you had submitted because it wasn't in this evening's packet. Any questions? Commissioner Grumney?
Yes, and to thank you also for participating. Is it your preference that you would prefer that the gas station not be there or that, that gas stations are able to sell alcohol?
Both.
If you were to pick one over the other, would there be one over the other?
I, I prefer if they, they do not sell alcohol, just like everybody else in city of Thousand Oaks. All of us, we don't, we are not required by, by city of Thousand not to sell any alcohol. Like I said, it's like Seven-Eleven, that's all over the place. They sell alcohol, beverages, beer and wine. They do not sell alcohol. How come?
So you're mostly opposed to selling of alcohol?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Karen Wilburn. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen Wilburn, and I live at twenty-eight thirty-seven Denise Street in Newberry Park. I'm very much against this proposed development due to the heavy impact it's going to have on traffic in our neighborhood. Wendy Drive and the Wendy Drive off and on ramps are already congested. We have a Home Depot, Target, several other shopping areas immediately at this freeway off ramp. We just can't handle the additional congestion from another big box store without the quality of our life being negatively impacted. The city's own two thousand and five traffic study rated the Wendy Old Canal Road intersection as Level of Service D. This was mitigated somewhat by restriping the lanes at that intersection. Going south through this intersection, the lanes are reduced from two to one lane within only a few hundred feet. This creates an unsafe condition which will only become worse with added traffic, and no additional mitigation is planned for this intersection. One of my questions is, we didn't actually ask what the level of service would be at this intersection without the bridge. I understand the developer will have to provide some traffic mitigation on the northern side of the bridge prior to the opening. However, again, the city's two thousand and five report indicated the need for the widening of the bridge. And there's no promise this will really ever be done. It might be planned, but there's no promise it will be done. I also want to point out, how many years did it take for us to get that sound wall between Borchardt and Wendy? That was a very simple project. It took years. I was at Costco in Westlake Village on Saturday. First of all, it's a third to half a mile away from the freeway. Second, Linderell Canyon is six to eight lanes across between the freeway and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Third, other than Costco Albertson Center, a medium-sized industrial area and the hotel, Linderell Canyon just feeds traffic to residential areas. On the other hand, the proposed Newberry Car, Park Costco will be on a road which will be used to access it, Home Depot, Target, several smaller shopping areas, as well as a large industrial area which includes the Amgen Campus and Southern Newberry Park. Since the Wendy exit is the last before the grade, it's also at the end of the road, so to speak, meaning there's no access coming from the other side. The proposed road entrance is right at the freeway, which creates more congestion. If I counted right, there will be ten different lanes of traffic either entering, exiting, or turning to get on and off the freeway at Camino dos Rios and Academy Drive. Even Linderell Canyon only has a maximum of three lanes in any one area flowing between the freeway and the road, and there are no traffic signals to slow the flow. How can we possibly believe that the intersection of Camino dos Rios and Academy can handle ten lanes of traffic? One last comment, I'd also like to point out the traffic studies only deal with traffic impact during peak hours. They don't measure the ongoing increase through the entire day. Is the backup I have to deal with on the, in the morning at Wendy Old Canal going to be the norm throughout the entire day while more and more people use Wendy and Old Canal to go to and from Costco? Please don't do this to the people of Newberry Park. I respectfully ask you not to recommend, I respectfully ask you not to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Excuse me. Are there questions of the speaker? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Berta Hurley. You come forward, state your name and city residence, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Berta Hurley. I live in Newberry Park, and I too came and spoke in nineteen ninety-six in favor of Costco coming to Newberry Park. I'm here again tonight with the same request. I believe that in strengthening our community, the Seventh Day Adventists have been wonderful neighbors. They've offered their facilities to many of our local groups and youth sports groups and schools. And they've been here longer than most of us have, I think, in this, this room. I would be impressed if anybody has been here in the canal longer than the Seventh Day Adventists. So I believe that they should be able to use the property that they have to help with their financial endeavors. Costco is a very conscientious business. I'm very impressed with their CEO, unlike many of the people that we've been hearing about in the news lately. His salary is very minimal in comparison, and he, they have great job opportunities. Their focus is on their employees and members, of which I am a member. I can speak about the signage on the canopies. Yesterday, I was in the valley, went to a Costco that I had never been to before, was out of gas, had to look around, and the things that I saw off on the far end of the parking lot were the signs that directed me over to that. Dollar eighty-seven a gallon, so it was a great, I'm glad I found it. Also, as far as the fire station goes, I can't say enough for Station Thirty-five and their hard dedication, willingness to help all of us out, and they definitely deserve it. If any of you have ever been to their station, I personally have been to all thirty-five, or to all of the stations in Ventura County, not because I'm an employee, but because I have a grandson who had a mission to go to all of them. So we're very fond of Station Thirty-five and wish them the best and a wonderful new facility. So I'm just here to speak out in favor of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of the speaker? Thank you. Bob Reed, and following Bob Reed will be Nathan Boren. Good evening, Mr. Reed.
Good evening. My name is Bob Reed, and I reside here in Newberry Park. Something I haven't heard addressed tonight is the financial aspect of this project. According to the Ventura County Star, they were estimating seven to eight hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. I can see where that could easily become a million dollars as time progresses. Costco stores provide good quality merchandise at a fair price, and they treat the customers well. I live in Newberry Park, and so for me, it's about a thirty-mile round trip whether I go to Oxnard or to Westlake. And we can't count on ExxonMobil to keep those prices down. So that's four to five dollars of fuel just to get over to those stores. I hope that the people who are involved in this project don't allow it to take another twelve years for this to come to fruition. Moving at glacial speed like that, a lot of us here aren't going to be here. So I'm talking for myself. But, no, they, and, and I was thinking that the, they're talking about this bridge. It might be a good idea not to wait till the bridge is done because Caltrans isn't known for moving rapidly, and they, they, they also move at glacial speed. So it might be beneficial to go ahead and allow the project to continue, come to fruition, and, and then see if maybe the, the additional bridge lane might not even be needed. It may be okay, but I wouldn't want to see the project held up for the lack of Caltrans moving in an expedient way. And I hope that you people do not allow some tree-sitting extremists like they did in, in Santa Clarita to hold up this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Questions? Next speaker is Nathan Boren, and then following Nathan Boren is Sharon Merritt. Good evening.
Good evening. Nathan Boren, Newberry Park. And I'm not a tree sitter. But I don't know where Ms. Baden is getting her traffic level of services from because I've talked to staff, and these intersections are already at class, at Level D or worse. Maybe they're at C at midnight or at four o'clock in the morning, but not during most of the day. I live near Ruth and Wendy, and I'm a virtual prisoner in my neighborhood, and I'm tired of the traffic, and I want to see the improvements done before Costco is in business. Now, they might not be entirely at fault here. It's all cumulative. And the studies that Ms. Baden was talking about were done before the Lowman Center was built, before the two-story office complex on Camino dos Rios just south of Lawrence was built, and now they're rehabilitating the old Ace Hardware Project, our shopping center which will create at least five to ten times traffic as the old businesses there had. Also, during the presentation, oh, and I hope you do talk to your staff from the Traffic Division here to find out what the true levels of service are at those intersections. Now, the applicant is asking for changes, so it's not out of question here for the city to ask for a few themselves. And traffic is already at near gridlock. I think we need to put in the infrastructure before any more building is completed. The target date for completion of the Costco per the developer is 2010. They say, staff has said that best-case scenario, the bridge might be completed by 2012. That's best case. It's not guaranteed. Also, I was reading in the staff report here about oak tree condition. Number four requires a minimum of sixteen thirty-six inch boxes and thirty-two twenty-four inch box oaks to replace the ones that ring removed, but that was not mentioned in the staff report on the overhead. So I was wondering if that was just a recommendation or are they actually going to replace all these oak trees they're going to remove? So basically, my, I don't mind Costco being built, even though I've never been a card-carrying member of Costco. I don't shop there, but my main concern is traffic and the congestion that we have on what I call the Wendy Drive congestion corridor. We need infrastructure improvements, and I'm asking that those improvements be made before they get occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of the speaker? Thank you very much. Sharon Merritt, followed by Jan Gordon. Good evening, Ms. Merritt.
Sharon Merritt, Newberry Park. Good evening. At this time of Thanksgiving, we need to be thankful. We have a job and are able to afford our mortgages and rent in order to live in our beautiful community. Some have not been so fortunate. We have friends who have lost their jobs. I am so happy that Costco is coming to our city of, fine city of Newberry Park and will mean less traffic trips for Newberry Park residents that are currently frequenting other Costcos at this time. It will bring extra revenue to our city. Costco has determined that having an additional Costco will increase their profit, not take away business from their other stores. It will bring additional employment to our community and keep grocery prices down. There are currently businesses that are closing down or reducing staff. This project comes at an optimal time to bring a prosperous business to our community. Our gas prices in Newberry Park and other parts of Thousand Oaks have been at an all-time high. Having a Costco gas station will help make other gas stations competitive and result in seeing lower gas prices in our area. The only thing that I regret is that my dad never saw a Costco store. He would have been, loved it and been their number-one customer. Please put the Costco project on the fast track. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much. And Jan Gordon followed by Michael Ireland. If you'd come forward, state your name and city residence, please.
Hello. My name is Jan Gordon. I live right here in Thousand Oaks. I currently shop at the Costco in Simi and it's currently, right now, 14 miles away. I prefer to keep my dollars right here in the city. You tell us to shop locally and that's quite impossible. Used to shop at Westlake, but the problem is, they don't carry as many products there as they do at Simi. And I love the gas station. Just got the gas today. It's $1.89. And with the gas station, sorry, ExxonMobil in USA, I'm paying about 15 cents less a gallon. I drive a van, okay? So, I would prefer to keep my dollars here in the city. I can't do that right now. And because, sorry, gas prices are still too high, I do all my shopping in Simi. And it's, I like to do one-stop-shop everything, so I don't have to travel so far. I live right here by Colina Middle School, so we've calculated the Costco here. I'm for Costco. It's only four miles away. Heck of a lot better than going 14 miles, 25 miles. And it's a lot more wear and tear on the vehicles. And I'm sorry, you know, I like to keep my van until it drops dead. So, it's, I prefer Costco bringing on. We need the tax revenue. We need the jobs. And it's just more convenient. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions, Speaker? Thank you. And the last speaker is Michael Ireland.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. My name is Michael Ireland. I live in the city of Thousand Oaks. To make full disclosure, I am a land use attorney, but I'm not paid to be here tonight. In fact, my wife gave up our date night so I could be here to speak on our behalf as citizens of Thousand Oaks, not as a paid attorney. In full disclosure again, I was here 12 years ago as a paid attorney for Price Club, which was then changing to Price Costco. And the city of Thousand Oaks burdened that project with so many conditions, they ran the company out of the city. We lost about $10 million in tax revenue by moving that Costco onto the Westlake Village City property. Don't kill it again with a bunch of conditions that are not essential. Making it overly expensive and approving it is an approved project, but it will not get built if you just throw everything in the kitchen sink into these conditions. Now, the big issue here is that I've heard some people talk about traffic at the Wendy, 101 interchange, and daily trips. My kids go to Newbury Park High School. I cross that intersection four times a day, minimum, usually more and often on weekends because my kids are in sports, marching band, et cetera. That intersection is not burdened by stores. It's burdened by houses. You already approved Dos Vientos. All those people live there already. They're already driving somewhere. None of the people in Dos Vientos are subsistence farmers. They're not subsistence hunters. They all go somewhere to get their food already. They're already making trips to Costco in Oxnard, Simi, or Westlake Village, as we've heard. They're already driving somewhere to a small market multiple times a week. They're already driving across that intersection for other reasons. When you look at page 91 of your report, that's on the bottom right-hand corner page, where it has the average daily trips, the ADT says 9,165. That is misleading. Now, I have kudos for Beth and Claudia did a great report. But that ADT is misleading. That's only talking about people that will go into Costco. It doesn't say how many people would already be crossing that bridge anyway because they're going to Albertson's or they're going to Costco in Westlake, or they're going to Costco in Oxnard. Commissioner Grumney picked that up. They're already driving across that bridge. It's not necessarily going to get worse because you open a store there. They're already driving somewhere. They're already crossing that intersection. I understand that I have to go now, but the last thing I would suggest is that on page 38, Condition 54, you are arbitrarily burdening the construction timing of the project by saying that you cannot start construction until everything is done. You can build a construction project simultaneously with street projects, different construction crews. They still can't get a building open for occupancy until they get the CO. So change the condition back. That is one of the arbitrary conditions that just costs a fortune and does nothing for the people of City of Thousand Oaks. So look at page 38, Condition 54, and change it back. And by the way, the price of gas in TO is $1.210. Simi Costco tonight was $1.84. I filled up there just before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ireland.
Questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Your time is up. We'll now go back to staff and staff will answer questions that came up during the testimony. And additional questions to staff, Commissioners? And Ms. Noonan, did you? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Pedrosa.
Okay, let me go back to my notes over here. I'm going to let Ms. Baden answer Condition 54. She went into an extensive schedule in trying to figure out when certain permits should be allowed. And so I'm going to have her talk on that. On Condition 57B, adding bus stop is okay, so we'll go ahead and modify that. Condition, again, 57, Item F, actually, that one is an original condition, is, was part of what's crossed out, old Condition 55, the third paragraph down. Basically, what we did is that we regrouped the conditions to make it easier to see what items were mitigations and what items had construction schedules that we needed to meet. So that was in original language. It's not new language, so we prefer to leave it the way we have it. Condition 58C, we have no problem adding, prior to building permits, comma, excluding retaining walls. Basically, the retaining wall they had to build north of Costco is okay to start construction, but just a building permit for the Costco or major one will be not allowed until those improvements are done. So we will add excluding retaining wall. Let me see. In regards to the conditions on the oak tree, Permit Condition Number Four, if the applicant, if the Commission decides to impose the condition to add the additional four trees to be transplanted, then the numbers would change per my slide, which has to do with the five that trees are replaced by 15 gallons, the removals that go down to six and the transplants are increased to seven. So, seven total. So that's why the slide was different than what the staff report, Condition Four of the ODP says. And let me just check really quick. Again, Condition 19 of the SUP in regards to the signage on the canopy, we still believe that that's not necessary and we do not support that. The same with the DP Condition 424. And in regarding to the lotting dock, if there are some landscaping treatment that could be done, we could entertain that. And that would be up to the Commission to decide. We don't have a finalized design that we can agree on right now. In regards to Condition 25 on the entry tower, we disagree with the applicant and we still think that we can go back and work on it a little bit more. And we prefer for that condition to remain as is. And I believe that's all my notes. I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Baden in regards to Condition 54.
Actually, I'd like to start with an easy one first as a housekeeping item. There were a couple of conditions that refer to decorative paving. One in the specific plan amendment, which was Condition 39, Number 56. And that has some language about the spacing to the fire station driveways. And I'd like to add that same language to page 94, Condition Number 108, which is in the DP conditions. So on the, on the fourth line down, it would read, "No paver shall be located within 50 feet of the public street nor within 250 feet of fire station driveways." And that would make this condition consistent with the language of the specific plan amendment conditions. Then I'd like to talk about Condition 54. We're talking about the timing of the street improvement completion with respect to permits for the project. And from what I understand, the construction of the Costco building is a little bit different than most buildings because it is a tilt-up building. And we're told that it has about 110-day completion period, which in terms of construction of street improvements is really like a blink of an eye. It's a little bit more than three months. And I don't feel comfortable with that short of a turnaround time between building permits and occupancy permits. I would rather stay on the side of caution and request that these street improvements and traffic signal improvements be completed and working fully operational prior to issuing building permits, so that we're guaranteed that everything is done and buttoned up and ready for the project to open. You don't want to open a brand-new project with construction going on out in the field. The other item that I wanted to talk about is, Mrs. Wilburn had talked about cumulative impacts and what happens on the Wendy Bridge regarding level of service if the Wendy Bridge widening isn't complete. And we have Costco going in, what's the level of service going to be at that point? And those numbers are included in MND 253. And obviously, the levels of service do degrade. But the thing to keep in mind is that these are cumulative impacts and the Wendy Bridge widening would mitigate cumulative impacts. It's impossible to predict when the other projects in this area are going to be coming online. And it's basically looking at full build-out of all of the zoning in the Newbury Park area. So, it's basically a timing issue. And we know what the level of service is today. We, it was documented in 2005, as one of the other speakers mentioned. We have had other projects come online. It's pretty typical to have your traffic impact studies look at particular snapshots in time and not look at conditions every six months or every year. That really would be too cumbersome to get through the environmental review process. Instead, we like to look at each project on its own merits and look at project impacts and project mitigation. And we believe that the mitigation that's recommended for this project is adequate to serve the community and to mitigate the project impacts before the doors open. That's why the mitigation is set up the way it is. I'd like to leave the timing the way it is also. I hope that answers the questions that were raised by the speakers. Those were the only comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Ms. Noonan?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'm sure, as Beth mentioned, the Condition Number 54 is consistent with all of the timing for the improvements as set forth in Condition 58. And just for clarity's sake, it was, it was put out differently in its own condition, but it is truly consistent with all of the other street improvements that we've conditioned on the project from a timing perspective. One issue was raised with respect to the selling of alcohol at the same place that the sale of gas takes place. The city prohibits gas stations from selling alcohol. This is a different situation. This is a Costco building. The sale of gas is strictly accessory to that use, so it doesn't violate our rules and regulations with respect to the selling of alcohol at gas stations. So there is no inconsistency
I think that's it.
If I may just briefly add just a personal note here. My name is Greg Smith and I've been working on the environmental review of this project from day one, along with Mr. Orpman. And I just wanted to respond to the glacial speed comment. You know, we've been involved in this particular project for probably two years now. There's been a great deal of attention paid to the traffic impact analysis in this project. And there have been changes along the way. So, while it may seem that this has taken an inordinate amount of time here, this has been a project that's been refined for the past two years. We've looked at it very, very carefully and we brought to you what we feel is an environmental analysis of this project, which has mitigated all of the impacts. So, it's a collaborative effort, everybody working together. But these things take some time to work out. So, this is where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
There is one thing I did want to add. There's, as you know, that there's been some requests for changes to staff-proposed conditions. And before the applicants come up for a rebuttal, I just want to remind the Planning Commission, if their intention is to either modify the conditions as proposed by staff or add language that is proposed, that you are proposing that's not in there, or grant discretion to staff to fix it subsequent to this meeting, since it will be going to the Planning Commission, please make that clear prior to the applicant coming up for rebuttal, so that the applicant has an opportunity to respond to those intentions by you, and also gives them an opportunity to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commission questions to staff? Commissioner Adams?
Just a question for Ms. Baden again. Just answer me again. What would be your response again to this notion that the bridge is an open-ended project and could go beyond 2012 and further out? How would you, how would you respond to that?
The project is moving ahead. The city is working with Caltrans. Just to give you a little bit of background on what's been accomplished so far, we have a conceptual design that's been approved in concept by Caltrans. They've, we're working through the environmental review process. The document's being circulated to receive public comments. It's basically moving as fast as the Caltrans process allows. The city has also received federal grant funding for a large portion of the cost of the project. The rest of the funding is going to be collected over time as these cumulative projects come in and contribute towards the cost of the bridge widening project. So everything is in place. Everything is moving along smoothly and we don't anticipate any delays. What we're projecting is that the entire construction would be complete in the year 2012.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grumney?
Yeah, I'm again piggybacking on what Commissioner Adams is saying right now. And if I'm understanding this correctly, on the, on the bridge widening, is that the bigger question is, is how to maybe help move this to be a priority for the city of Thousand Oaks, not so much as part of this application, but for them to see it as, as a real important item. Because the reality is, once Costco goes in, it is going to be a lot of traffic that's going to be coming back and forth. I live in Newbury Park. I travel on that. And that's going to be the biggest question that residents are going to have when they are facing that impact, is wondering why we didn't do that. So I know that might be a little bit of a statement at the same time, but really, this is a City of Thousand Oaks project that they have to decide they want to fund. Is that correct?
The city is already committed to funding a portion of the project. We have federal funds that have been promised to the city as a grant for the majority of the cost. You talked about speeding up the process. Could that happen?
We're changing a priority. I mean, you know, to, to it becoming a, maybe a priority that they want to address soon. I mean, you know, to, to it becoming a, maybe a priority that they want to address sooner than later.
The project is moving ahead as fast as we can move it with the funding and the staff that we have at this point. But we could assign other staff, we could put a little bit more money into speeding up the design process and some of the review of, of the, the plans. We could expedite the construction. Each of those components would, would cost a little bit more, but that very well could, could be done, and the, the timing could be moved up. Could it be matching the, the Costco construction? That's really hard to tell, but we could, we could escalate the construction timeframe.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go back to Mr. Dale Ortmann. You have five minutes rebuttal. If you come forward, state your name and city of residence again for us, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Dale Ortmann with the Holland Group, City of Thousand Oaks, representing Seventh Day Adventist. A couple of items. We've been hitting on this bridge, and I know the city is working very diligently on the bridge. Caltrans, believe it or not, it works much faster than I recall from years ago. It seems like they return phone calls and write letters more promptly than they used to. So I guess Mr. Schwarzenegger is pushing the right buttons, I don't know. But I, I firmly believe that this project really needs to be pulled away from whatever timing issues you have with the bridge. I stated earlier, and I want to restate, that all through this specific plan, and I've been with it from its birth, we're able to go forward as long as we maintain that level of service at that intersection of C. And this project, without the bridge being widened, does that. We are making the improvements that maintain an LOSC at that intersection with Costco. And I, I don't know if I could state it any more clearly. We're all in favor of the bridge, we're paying a lot towards it, but we're independent of it. And, and I really need you guys to focus on that. There was, on the condition fifty-four that we've had discussion with, we, we all want the same thing. We want to be able to move forward. The way condition fifty-four is written right now, and one of the speakers that came up here, Mr. Ireland, stated it very, very clearly. It puts a burden on the contractor and the developer to have the language in there the way it is now. It, it would delay the opening of Costco four months, just by having that change in the language. And I really don't see the need for it. The developer is willing to have that condition rewritten that clearly states that they can't open Costco until those improvements are in. They will, they will agree to have language in there that would strengthen the city's position if they feel pressured. And I believe that's where this change is coming from, that, that all of a sudden, when the store is ready to open and things aren't done, there's a lot of pressure put on staff and the city to open that store and get it working. And I, and I understand that, and I understand why they're doing it. But if we could put some language in there that ties their hands so that they don't, they get that three to four months, believe me, that's a lot of time. And it just frees them up and makes them feel a lot better. And so I, again, I'm willing to work with staff to, if they want to put some harsher language in there, I, I think we could live with that. But don't tie their hands. The way it's written right now is, is this doesn't work for them. There was one thing, and I, and I apologize earlier, I, I slipped up. There's, in the staff report on page twelve, there was a statement that was made earlier that is not entirely, I think it's actually page fifteen on the bottom, twelve on the top, undergrading the fourth line from the bottom, there's a statement in there that says, "Because we're putting one and a half to one slopes at the rear of the Costco store, we're reducing the wall heights from thirty to eighteen feet." That basically is a correct statement. There are still some areas behind the Costco store that aren't visible from the parking lot or from the streets or from the freeway that are still going to be thirty feet high. That's in the western, northwestern corner of the project, and they won't be visible unless you're in the back of the Costco store. But I just wanted to make that clear, that, that needs just to be cleaned up a little I've exceeded my time, so I, unless you have more questions for me, I'll sit down. But I do want that fifty-four somehow changed. I think it would make everybody feel better on our side.
Thank you. Commissioner Grumney?
Okay, hi.
Hello.
What specifically is your recommendation on fifty-four?
We like, we like the language that was originally in the specific plan. In other words, we don't want to be burdened to have-
No, I understand the process-
We want to be able to pull a billing permit for Costco prior to having all the traffic signals completed. There is crossover time, that we think that, that by having that language in there right now, it, it will delay us. If we can't pull that billing permit, and they'll have, they'll have the ability for the timing, they know what their timing is on the lead time for the traffic signals, that's usually the issue. We have to order these things, they have to be custom-built. And, but we're willing to accept and, and clearly have language in there that says we can't open. Right. And, and I think that it, it ties into the occupancy versus the billing permit. In other words, if you look at the very end of that condition, and that's the way we've always been since we've worked on the specific plan for the last twelve years, we want to keep it that way. And I don't, and I understand their position. They, they feel pressured, but let's get some kind of language in there that ties, ties us up so that we can't open it. That's fine. But give us that three to four months, which is the construction time of the Costco store. She stated that correctly.
Okay, so your, your recommendation is, is that you prefer to say prior to occupancy than prior to billing permits, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. With a caveat that they are, they have to have it done before they get their occupancy. We're okay with that.
Commissioner Adam?
So under that scenario, then, it, it would mean that the construction of, the road improvements would be happening concurrently with the construction of the building?
That allows us to be able to do that. It allows us to be able to finish the road improvements while the building is under construction. That is correct. We've had that language in there from day one, but we haven't had a problem with this on this specific plan in the past. I think staff has seen problems with this on other projects. I, I can't comment on that, but I believe that's what's driving this change to the condition. And frankly, I don't see a need for it.
Well, I think, I guess the intent of the staff is to avoid, you know, excess snarls and all the pitfalls that go with construction to try to, you know, do the road improvements first, then start the store. Don't you think if you do it all at once, you could get off on the wrong foot?
Frankly, I don't. We've been doing it this way ever since I've been doing business in this city, and I, I just don't really see the need for the change. If, if we're tied to occupancy, that's fine. I mean, we all want the same thing. I just think it's an unnecessary burden put on the developer, and they don't like it. And, and I, frankly, I don't think it's necessary.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Adam? Well, let's finish the rebuttal period. Okay, right. Okay, well then, go ahead. Do you have a question to staff?
Well, yeah, I was just going to ask, ask how they would respond to Mr. Ortmann's statement, that it's, that it's business, you know, business as usual, and there's no problem concurrently constructing the building and fixing the roads at the same time.
What Mr. Ortmann said, I totally agree with, that the city has had problems with other projects in the past, and street improvements and traffic signals have not been complete, and the building is done, they're ready for occupancy, and we run into real problems trying to keep traffic moving safely and smoothly with a brand-new project, which, you know, has opening events and all kinds of attractions, without the improvements being complete and the construction being gone. You know, detours and temporary fixes on, on streets. The way that the language is presented by staff, give staff the leniency to, to say, "Okay, you know, we can be a little more lenient with you," rather than get into a situation where we're basically, you know, struggling to get air, and it's not, not happening. And that's probably not the best way to describe it, but basically, it pre-loads these improvements so that if we want to be a little more lenient when the time comes, we have that opportunity rather than the project being ready for occupancy. There are unsafe conditions in the field, and we're basically, you know, our hands are tied. The project is ready to be opened, people are losing a lot of money, and the community wants to see the project open. So that's why the conditions are worded the way that they are. We understand that Costco has a very short turnaround time compared to other buildings. Most buildings are usually at least a year, if not more, to complete between building permits and occupancy permits. This is a very short turnaround time, and they have a very long list of improvements that they need to construct. Some of them are tied to Caltrans permits. And like Mr. Ortmann said, there's a number of traffic signals, there's signal interconnect, there's all sorts of issues that need to be addressed. They're all outlined in the conditions of approval, and the wording is consistent on all, all of the conditions, that we'd like all of the street improvements complete, all the traffic signals operation, operational prior to building permits versus occupancy permits in this case, because of the short turnaround time with the building.
So then the issue isn't so much that the two things would be happening concurrently, it's that the street improvements will be absolutely done before there's, the building's open. You don't want to see the building open and the street's not done yet.
That's right, because that lends itself to an unsafe condition. And you, you talk about traffic issues and congestion and inconvenience and safety issues. That's something that we're definitely trying to avoid by having everything cleaned up well in advance. That way, if we have any issues that we need to be a little more lenient on, we have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
We'll give Mr. Ortmann an opportunity to come back up to the microphone if you want to make any statements.
Good, thank you, Chair Reynolds, Dale Ortmann, Thousand Oaks. Again, respectfully, the, the conditions are all consistent, but they're consistently handcuffing the developer. And again, we're not asking for anything different than what we all want. We want everything done before occupancy. We agree to that. We want the streets done, we want the signals operational, we want the signage, the striping, landscaping, everything done prior to occupancy. We want that. Why, why are we putting a billing permit all of a sudden on this? Why is that? And it's to give a factor of safety to it? I don't think that's necessary. We're willing to accept the occupancy limitation until all the traffic improvements are done. We're willing to accept that. Why change it? I don't see the need for it. It's a factor of safety that they, makes them feel better. Again, if there's something that we could do that, that gives, if they're feeling, feeling pressure, I don't know what project Beth is mentioning, but she's mentioning a project that they got pressured into giving occupancy before the street improvements were done. I don't know which one that was. We didn't have that problem with Target, we didn't have that problem with Home Depot. These are all projects that were built in the specific plan under the original language, the language that we want kept. It's so, I don't know how I make it any clearer. We want it kept the way it was. We want that occupancy kept, not billing permits. If it's three to four months with a Costco, I don't know, we could have rain, we could have other things that delay it. Costco may take five months, I don't know. But why tie the developers' hands? There's no reason for it.
But I really got the feeling that staff, if they see that things are going along and the improvements are being done, that the staff might be able to issue the billing permits. Isn't that what I was hearing?
I would think so. That's what's always been done in the past. That's the way we've built this center so far. I, I, it's just something that the developer feels very, very strongly about, and I'm respectfully asking you as the commissioners to allow the language to stay the way it has been for the last twelve years. I don't want to change it. It's worked in the last twelve years. The center that's constructed to date, which is very, very nice, it works very, very nice, we have a level of service C, just like we've been asked to do. We've done that. We've done everything the city has asked, and we have spent millions, literally many millions, on street improvements that benefit the entire city, not necessarily this project. They have been a good developer, they have done everything you've asked them to do. Don't tie their hands now unnecessarily, there's no reason for it. Don't change it, leave it the way it's always been.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Ortmann? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me? No. And the last speaker is Mr. Michael Akuma. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you also have five minutes.
My name's Michael Akuma, Costco wholesale from Orange. I just wanted to add what Dale was talking about, tying it to our CFO. We have several projects that we currently are working on from Hawaii to Southern California. Member safety is, is prime, access to the site's important. Because of our short duration, we have the ability to start the project at a later time. So we will not open a warehouse until certain issues, certain items, certain things are completed off-site, just because on the practical side, if you can't get to a warehouse, there's no point to have it open. And if you can't get there safely, we'll never hear the end of it. So in our best interest, we would, we are self-regulating ourselves on several projects. And in fact, even though it is tied to CFO on those projects, we started the projects, the construction of the Costco later to coincide with the opening of, of the CFO, the completion of the offsites. So we can do that, and we have delayed openings in order to accommodate that, to make sure that everything gets done. So if it's tied to CFO, that would probably better, work better for us. Also, let me touch upon again the other three items with the canopy sign for the gas station and the truck loading area. We think that we can come with a better solution that is easier to maintain, that'll meet the conditions and the intent of the staff by providing some sort of landscaping in front of the loading dock to screen it, if that's the only concern, rather than a gate. It's easier to, from our standpoint, to police and to meet the intent of the city. And the last one's just the height. We, we feel that the canopy entry height is a little bit tall, and we think we can, it should be where it is, where it is now. There's any other questions, I can answer.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Akuma? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Pedrosa, and because she wants to make a statement, we'll have to call Mr. Orton and Mr. Okuma back up.
Actually, I'm gonna have Ms. Baden answer, make a statement.
I'd like to add that we have had issues with many other projects very recently and very big projects here in the city that have requested occupancy before all of the street improvements are buttoned up. One of them was part of the SDA project, it was the Lowman's project that recently came online. One of the suggestions that staff wanted to make, we could add a different type of language if you wanted to see that, but what we're hoping is that you would understand that staff could be more lenient with the way that the language is presented now. And if we see that everything's working just fine, we could, you know, issue the building permits and move ahead with construction of the building. The other thing that they were talking about as an option would be that no occupancy for stocking or training might be another option to full occupancy or temporary occupancy. That no temporary occupancy would be granted for stocking or training within the store. Those would give you some options.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say something, Ms. Noonan?
You're looking confused over there. Okay.
Not confused, just wanted to hear what you were gonna say.
No, I just wanted to make clear that what Beth is saying with respect to granting leniency, the way the condition is written is that we can say no to a building permit if we don't think that the plans are being prepared in a timely manner, if the traffic equipment hasn't been ordered, if we find out that even though the traffic equipment has been ordered, there's a six-to-eight month delay that we'll be getting it, or Caltrans is, you know, is looking at permits but is being held up. It gives staff the discretion to say no. The condition says that we don't have to issue it until the permit is, issue the building permit until the improvements are in place. But what it also does is that if everything is moving along and the plans have been approved and the equipment's been ordered and Caltrans is moving along, it does give staff the flexibility to say, even though it says we won't grant you your building permit until it's improved, until the improvements are in place, we see that you're moving along and we'll grant you the building permit. That does, the way it's written right now, staff has the discretion to do that. It's because, it's standard waiver language. It's just standard waiver language. We can grant the permit, staff has the flexibility to modify minimal issues, minimal conditions, aspects of conditions. So, the way it's written right now, staff can do that.
It seems to me, it says it clearly, developers should complete the improvements prior to building permits.
That's correct.
But where's the discretion part?
It's just, it's standard practice in building and construction industry. It's standard practice. If we see that things are moving along, we can grant the building permit.
It's just like staff working with them as far as the colors on the stripe or things like that. There's some things that are just kind of given.
No different than when you look at like conceptual landscape plans. What you have is a condition right here that basically says that we're, we are accepting the conceptual landscape plan subject to final approval. It's no different than us going through, tweaking things here and there. It's no different than staff looking at your, the grading plans that you look at are almost in draft scale. They'll be refined when they go through plan check after a project is approved, and so you'll have some minimal changes in grade. Even though the grading plan that you're approving might say 2%, the grading, the grade at the end of the day might be 2.5%. It doesn't mean that we have to come back to you and modify the condition or modify the plans. It's what staff does when they're processing the project.
Okay, so do we, we need Mr. Orton back up again? And Mr. Okuma?
Thank you, Chair Dale Orton, Thousand Oaks. You know, we've been kicking this around too, and Mr. Adam, you're right, we couldn't see where there was discretionary language in that at all. We still want that tied to occupancy, not building. And maybe there's a way we could put some discretionary language in there by putting the word-
If you want to add, unless waived by staff.
Something like that, or substantially between shall and complete, maybe we put some kind of language in there that gives, again, we all want the same thing. We want to do it too, but I still think we need something in there that allows that discretion to take place, and that would make Costco feel better.
If you put unless waived by staff, that still gives staff the total authority to decide whether or not to grant the building permit if staff doesn't think that things are moving along or that there are some hurdles that are unanticipated. This is a pretty significant project, there's a lot of things that are going to be going on at the same time out there. If that makes the applicants feel more comfortable, again, I just want to make it clear that this still gives total discretion to staff to decide whether or not to issue the building permits.
And again, I think we'll probably know that, and we'll probably be able to, again, Mr. Okuma stated that they police themselves. This isn't the first Costco that's been built, a very successful company. So, again, we all want the same thing, but give us that discretion and I think that a change in that language that allows that to be tied to occupancy would be our preference. But if there's some kind of language in there that allows staff, and we'll know if the signal equipment's ordered, we'll know if it's being delivered, we'll know that ahead of time. So, we'll have that ability to apply discretion, and staff will know that.
So, do you want additional wording, other than, I mean, unless waived by staff?
I want the word occupancy in there instead of building permit, but if we can't bend staff to go with that, if we have some kind of language in there that allows the developer to pull a building permit...
So, unless waived by staff is not sufficient for you?
It's not my preference, but I'll take that over nothing. Tracy? You could put some kind of language in there, can't you?
Okay, there's a couple of things also, I want to put this whole thing into perspective. Planning Commission is the recommending body tonight. This is still gonna be going to the city council, okay? You know, I can tell you right now, how many hours have we sat in a meeting discussing just this issue? 12 hours?
Well, it has been discussed, but I don't-
So, this isn't something that has come up at the very last minute. Staff will continue to meet with the applicant. At this point, however, I think that we've kind of debated this issue to death, and perhaps it's time to close the public hearing and let the planning commissioners decide what their preference is or what their recommendation is to the city council. I think that the applicant has stated their position very well, as has staff, if I might suggest that.
Okay. One last thing, the kind gentleman sitting in the front row here reminded me that there was discussion about the traffic, the AM peak hour, the PM peak hour. Costco doesn't open till 11:00 in the morning, so there is no AM issues. So, people that were complaining about the morning traffic, it's really, it's not an issue really with Costco. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Okuma, did you want to come back up, or, no? Okay, no, then I will close the public hearing at this time. And now is a time for commission discussion or a motion. Commissioner Lund?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. Is Mr. Orton coming back up? Oh, okay. Boy, I'm, Mr. Orton, you're killing me.
I lose control quickly, don't I?
Never let it be said that you're not a heck of a negotiator or maybe just wearing us down here, I don't know, but I think enough is enough, so I want to get to this thing. I want to thank everybody for coming down here tonight, those that are for and those that are opposed. This is a big project. I want to thank the staff for all the monumental, we've, we see lots of these staff reports, and I want to thank the staff in its entirety, those on the dais, those here, those that are at home, for all the fine work that they've done to get us to this point. We're a heck of a lot further than we were 12 years ago, I think one of the speakers said. Another one of the speakers I want to comment on is blowing your wife off on a date night to be here tonight. I'm not sure that's in your best interest, but without that being said, that's not before us here tonight. Great project for everything that's involved, the Adventist Church, Costco wholesale, the fire station. I think this will be beneficial for the community. There's been a lot of work that's been done on this. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move that this commission recommends approval of the city council, the mitigated negative deck 266 in the mitigation monitoring plan for the applications and approval of SPA 2007-70740, Z 2007-70741, TTMJ 2008-70238, DP 2006-70589, SUP 2006-70591, and OTP 2007-70139, subject to the attached conditions and based on the findings in the staff report, including the supplemental report. And because we've had numerous discussions here tonight in terms of conditions and the findings of those conditions, I want to see if I can just put them all in one category to include all opposed and agreed upon by staff in discussion here tonight for conditions. The oak tree issue involving Commissioner Adams, I would include, Adam, I would include that in the motion also tonight with the transplant adjustments in regards to your discussion about the oak tree. And condition 54. Carf 54, where are you? I believe as written by staff would be the appropriate thing with the following verbiage. Pat yourself on the back, Mr. Orton, if this commission agrees to that. Unless waived by staff verbiage be put in to condition number 54. And I think that there, I think that that's it. I know there was a loading dock discussion, but I think that that falls under agreed or opposed to by staff. I think that there's some things that are going to be followed up by further discussion with staff and the applicant.
We need clarification on whether your preference is to leave the condition as written or to allow modification to allow staff to work out with the applicant potential design other than a gate such as landscape treatment or something else.
As stated in the latter.
We also need clarification on the tower, whether or not you support staff's recommendation to give staff discretion to increase the height of the tower.
I do.
And we also need clarification from you with respect to whether or not you support the signage on the canopy.
I do support it.
You support, you support signage on the canopy?
Yes.
Okay. Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, I take that back. Mr. Orton, it's your fault. I do not support the signage on the canopy. Thanks.
I think that was it.
So moved.
And I failed to report that I have six statement cards, five are in support and one is opposed to the project. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I support Commissioner Lund's motion, although I'd like to see if he would be willing to add something that Commissioner Grumney brought up, since this is a recommendation to the city council that, recommend to the city council that they encourage or to speed up the review and construction of the widening of the Windy Bridge.
I would entertain that. The language would be just recommendation to the council to look at that project and expedite?
Correct. That's all we're doing tonight, anyway.
Yes, I would support that.
I think this is a good project, certainly a lot of concerns with the traffic, but what staff has put together is just a thorough report. Very comfortable with how they have approached this. We're looking at the roads being realigned and widened prior to the project, bicycle lanes, coordination of traffic signals. It will still maintain a level C for the intersections. The building, 95% of the building is made up of recycled materials. Commissioner Lund and Adam with the transplant of the oak trees, and 42% of the bridge cost coming from just this one project is significant. So, all in all, this is a well-thought-out and safe project.
Thank you. Commissioner Grumney?
I too am in support of the motion and do want to recognize staff for their hard work. I think they did an excellent job. And also thank Costco for coming to our city and their willingness to work with our city and to bring forth a great project for the city. Just a couple of clarifications that I just want to add to that. I just want the record to show that I do support the recommendations that Ms. Baden had regarding condition 54, so that became a question. I'm in support of that. I think that, I think that your reasoning behind that is very sound, and I think that would be good for us and for the city. And last, I would also like to thank Commissioner Fisher for adding that on there, because as we go through changes in our community and we grow, we have to keep in mind that we're a habitat for human beings that have to be able to get from here to there, to be able to move. And I do think that you're going to see that impact there. And the public doesn't always understand that the city is not completely in control of everything that's all around. The freeways are state, our Caltrans, the off-ramps are different. And so, when it comes down to it and Costco comes in, they'll, of course, if they're not happy with that, they're gonna be frustrated with Costco. And then the end, that won't be good. And also, I think we need to be mindful of the other businesses that are on the other side that are impacted by difficulties from those wonderful customers who want to come from one side completely over the bridge. So, with that, that's all the comments I want to make.
Thank you. Commissioner Adam?
Yeah, I mean, I do understand the wording in 54 here. The city has to protect itself, and there's been experience in the past where pressure for opening has superseded road improvements. But I think the addition of that wordage, that unless waived by staff, gives them enough, if you can prove to them that what they need to know, I think they have enough flexibility there to, as you so aptly stated, get done what we all want to get done. I mean, I'm definitely gonna support the motion. I just want to be sure on the trees, we are specifically requiring transplant of 386, 475, G and F, correct, Commissioner Lund?
That's correct.
Good, good. You know, this specific plan was adopted back in 96. I mean, this is, this is the last piece of what is a logical end of this plan. I mean, it was commercial development from day one, there's no homes around it, there's no residents that are really being impacted. I don't believe it's gonna be a threat to any existing businesses as it may be in a small business environment or a neighborhood. The fire station's a plus. I do think we'll get that bridge widened, and I think we'll do it expeditiously, and I appreciate the addition of that to the motion. And I think that the traffic's been mitigated. I think the developer's stepping up and we're requiring to put in quite a bit to make sure that level of service stays at C, and I think it will. So, I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also will support the motion. I think one of the plus things is that we see a lot of transplanting trees and then require boxes of new trees to be planted, and they're not always planted right on-site. And all of these will be planted on-site, which I think is a plus for this project, rather than being planted in the forest or a park or something like that. I think one of the best things ever is how you have gone beyond the requirements of the parking on this project. And if the retention basin is covered over and that's additional parking, we will not only get 60 additional spots, it'll be closer to 100 with that. And you've also, as I always talk about, increased the handicap spots, and that's something that I look to. I said I was over in Seamee, and I go to Seamee when I'm buying big ticket items because sales tax is lower than Westlake. And I think now to have a Costco in Newbury Park but not- And I think now to have a Costco in Newbury Park that not, will only, not only save people the gas, also the sales tax if they've been shopping at Westlake too. And I hope those people that live on the other side of the grade will come up, just up the hill and shop at this Costco. Uh, I think with the road additions and the roads being at level C and the green building and especially the bridge widening, I think this is just a plus-plus development and I'm very pleased to support the motion for it. So, with that, final comments to the motion. Commissioner Lund?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, then please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And this is a recommendation to the City Council, so, um, with that, should we take a real fast three-minute break so the audience can leave? We just have a few little things we need to finish on our agenda. And thank you all for attending tonight. It was a very nice hearing. I'd like to call the meeting back to order and we'll continue on with the agenda. Uh, Ms. Elena Idens reports referrals. Community Development Director reports in referrals. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, uh, we actually have no referrals tonight, but, uh, we will, do have some items to go over for the upcoming Planning Commission and City Council meetings, uh, your next meeting of December 8th. We have three items on the agenda. Uh, we have a special use permit, uh, for the, uh, the Dos Vientos, uh, project area at the, uh, the shopping center out there to allow for, uh, live entertainment. We also have a underground utility waiver, uh, over there at Old Canal Road and, uh, and Windy Road, uh, Drive. And also a referral that's coming back from the City Council on the, uh, the PPD application that you reviewed a while back on the Wendy Gekel project site. Oh, I gotta turn this off, I'm sorry. There we go. Okay, uh, that's over on, uh, Corrin Hill Court, so, uh, that's coming back on the 8th. And then on, uh, January 12th, uh, with the new year, we have a couple of cases. One is a, a wireless site, uh, over on Jan's Road. And then also the housing element review, uh, that should, uh, probably take the majority of your meeting night. And, uh, for the City Council, uh, we have an item coming up, uh, or a Planning Commission I, or a department item coming up on December 16th. This is an appeal of special use permit, 2007-70713, which is a, um, T-Mobile, uh, cell site. Uh, this is a project that the Planning Commission denied, uh, on July 28th of 2008 over on Kimber Drive. It was, uh, the extension of a steeple area of existing church. You recall, that's going, again, on the, uh, December 16th, uh, hearing for the City Council. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Minutes of the November 10th, 2008 meeting, a motion. Commissioner Grumney?
I move approval of the meeting minutes of November 10th, 2008.
Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And are there any AB 1234 reports? None, thank you. Commission comments? I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and holiday season coming up. Uh, any other comments? Then I will adjourn the meeting to 6:30 PM on December, December 8th, 2008. Have a good evening.